Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest.
So I'm happy to call this meeting to order at 6:05 PM on Thursday, February 11th, 2021. Let me ask if there are any adjustments to the agenda?
Lynn, I have none at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. And are there any communications and public comments?
Nothing in the chat so far.
Okay, I don't see any members of the public. Always welcome, Fact TV, and thank you for being here. Let's go then to the next agenda item, which is to review and approve the board minutes for January 7, 2021. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes for January 7, 2021.
Thank you, Lynn. Thank you. Great. Any corrections? I actually have one, but are there any corrections or comments from anyone?
Lynn, I'm not sure if we can approve the minutes without a quorum.
Well, right on the line, we have three members.
Okay. Oh. We just lost... Oh, there she is. You're muted again, Cheryl.
That happens. Just as an aside, my internet is so unstable that when I get thrown off, then it automatically mutes me when I come back. My phone stays stable, which is why I use it to be in meetings. At any rate, we're able to connect business with three out of six voting members here, even though it's our preference typically to have four at minimum. With respect to the minutes, I think I would just make one correction, and that is the spelling of the name of the election official for the state of Vermont, the Agency of Education. That's Will Senning, S-E-N-N-I-N-G. So if Nicole could make that change to the minutes, I had no other corrections or suggestions. Are there any from anyone else? Okay, if not, let me do a quick roll call. Lynn, your vote, please.
Yes.
Okay, Melissa?
Yes.
Okay, and I'll go ahead and vote in the affirmative with that correction as noted. So with that, does it make sense? Are we ready to go into our principals' reports? Great to see both Liz and Helen.
Thank you.
You guys probably...
It's great to see you. It's been a while.
Right, right.
Been here, so it's great to see everybody. So as the typical Liz and Helen preference, we're doing this together because we do so many things that are in common, and I'll kick it off, and then we'll bounce back and forth between the two of us. So we're going to actually be reporting out since we got back from the holiday vacation up until now because that's been since the last time we saw you. So as you know, we had a remote week when we returned from the holiday break, and staff worked with previously developed remote learning schedules to keep the remote week of January 4th through the 8th will look very similar to the remote week after Thanksgiving break. And so teachers met in whole class and small groups daily, and the essentials or specialists, art, PE, music, and library, were provided for all students. And all accounts, it was a pretty successful week. They were able to apply much of the learning they had gotten from some of the PD that we had done, and so the learning continued. We've been back since in the building, and it's been great. And we will return to in-person instruction when we return after the February break, which starts tomorrow afternoon at 3 o'clock.
Great, I'm going to move into enrollment. Westminster currently has 136 students enrolled in the in-person instruction. We have 17 students enrolled with VT VLC. Overall, there's about 20 homeschoolers in Westminster, two of which are new this year due to COVID. We had a total of four positive cases since the beginning of the school year, with one new case over the December break.
And at Grafton, we currently have 43 students in the building. We lost one kindergartner and we gained one kindergartner. And we now have six VT VLC students, and our homeschool study group remains the same. And it's just two additional new ones this year because of COVID, with a total of eight. And since December, we've had two confirmed cases of COVID.
Great, I'll move on to professional development. Elementary teachers continue to meet regularly to discuss best practices for both in-person and remote instruction. The elementary school principals and I have developed these PLCs that are meeting regularly, so grade-level teachers across the SU have been able to connect, which has been wonderful. We continue to support our teachers with the implementation of Fuentes-Pennell Classroom. A spring PD schedule has been announced to our teachers, and we're excited that we're able to offer a focus on math as well. Specifically, Sandy Stanhope will be helping teachers develop their understanding of math menu. Along with this, our specialists, art, PE, music, libraries, school counselors, will be participating in creating a unified curriculum that's aligned with the national standards.
And then in addition, what's going on at Grafton, because this is actually our second year of implementing the Fuentes-Pennell Classroom, the teachers have eagerly jumped into thinking about improving instructions in math. And because the state of Vermont is sponsoring for free some great workshops that are connected to the All Learners Network, and they provide really like snippets of PD for only two hours from 4 to 6, and they just offer a wide variety of best practices in teaching math. And we've been doing this as a team together, going to these workshops and really thinking more deeply about instruction in math.
And like Helen referenced earlier, we are reporting out since the return from December break, so we welcomed all our students back on January 11th. We have completed our mid-year assessments at this point, so we're so proud of our students and their growth, given the multiple transitions from in-person to remote instruction. We have the cold temperatures. If you've noticed, our ice rink is up and running. We use this during our PE classes, recess, and during our after-school program. We're also participating in Vermont Lights the Way, so if you've noticed on the end of our building, under the creative genius of Janelle Beard, we created a mosaic. Each student created a small square and illustrated what, you know, love and peace meant to them, and she put those all together. And while we're still working on completing the electrical portion, the artwork is on the end of our building closest to the road, so if you drive by, check that out. Studio Y has been running all year, and classes are now able to take their second voyage.
And at Grafton, much the same. We have settled right back into the routine and working on the mid-year assessments with the MAPS and the Fuentes-Pennell and High Leverage Concepts for Math. And it was really exciting to sit with the teachers and celebrate some of the great growth that has occurred since the beginning of the year. And they were heartened to know that, you know, good instruction, even though we've had to be up against a variety of obstacles with, you know, two days in school, two days remote, and then finally, everybody in the building, and then every once in a while, we had to do remote. They were really celebrating the successes of their accomplishments of helping students gain in their learning. So that was a great moment for teachers to be able to recognize that their hard work has definitely paid off. Let's see, we continue to enjoy programs outdoors through the nature center. We just received another wonderful donation to continue to do that through the spring. And I would say, on average, our students participate in those programs about every six weeks. We are excited to be planning the return of Circus Smurkis with Troy. It's going to be a virtual program this year, and we're working on scheduling that for May with the hopes of being able to do an outdoor performance at the end of the school year, provided that all the regulations work for us. But if he can't be there in person, we'll do it with him on the big screen and invite the families to stand around socially distancing while the kids do their performance. And then the last piece is collaboration with Mandy, our librarian technology teacher. We're setting up an engagement family author read activity. While the author will work with our students throughout the day, and then in the evening, we'll do a family event, and then each of the students will receive two of his books. And I'm going to move us right on into our Dream, our after-school program. Currently, we have 25 out of the 43 of our students at Grafton are participating in a variety of activities after school. You know, this session has given the children the opportunity to explore concepts around healthy streams by listening to expert scientists that throughout the state that we have virtually brought them in, and then exploring these concepts in a school steam table. They've had fun with arts and crafts, alphabet, food, and yoga with Ms. Wendy. And some students come and are participating in tutoring support to help fill some gaps.
At Westminster, we average about 24 students who are attending our after-school program regularly, and we offer the student-specific tutoring, outdoor activities, indoor games and crafts. We're excited that coming in March, we'll be offering a little basketball skills and drills and possibly some kickboxing is in the works too. We're still working on that.
One of the pieces I could add about our after-school program is that Liz and I met with the coordinator for the after-school programs and the other director and talked about how can we together bring in some virtual opportunities through the Monchire or through the Echo or other possibilities like that. So I know they're thinking about that and working on that, and hopefully, some of those programs will occur. And that's the end of our report. Does anybody have any questions or comments for either one of us?
Let's see, well, Lynn, Melissa, do you have any questions?
I was curious how the assessments are going. But you guys at Grafton sound like you haven't really got yours all the way in quite yet, but at West, right? Is that what you said?
No, we've finished. We're all done with the January assessments.
So I'm just curious how it's looking for this COVID year with this different...
Yeah, I'll start. I'll add to what I said. It was, we saw some great gains, you know, in some kids that we were really worried about. And I think the combination of the Fuentes-Pennell Classroom program that we're in year two, as well as the intervention programs, both in math and in literacy, were tremendous and helped these kids get back on track and make the growth that we needed them to make. So it was a celebration, you know. We haven't filled all those gaps yet, but we made some significant gains, and that was heartening for the teachers to be able to see that, yep, against all these obstacles of many different ways of having to teach, they were able to do it and have success for our students. Liz, I'll let you...
Yeah, the hard work of the students and the staff has really shown some overall general growth with students. The Fuentes-Pennell Classroom assessments that we've been doing have been showing growth, the MAP. Overall, we saw when the kids came in in the fall when we did MAP, they had done the MAP last year, and we saw a dip generally, but it went right back up. So kids are making some real steady gains, which is exciting.
So steady gains from where they started or on target with where you'd expect them to be if COVID wasn't happening?
Well, you know, it is all over the...
That was my question.
Yeah, it is all over the map. You know, there are certain students who are exactly where they should be, and there are some students who've made significant gains but aren't there yet. And then there are some worrisome students who haven't made the progress that we had hoped they would make. But given all the obstacles, we are excited about what we were able to accomplish, but there's still, you know, more work to be done.
Yeah, I would say definitely overall, I don't know if students are right back at their projected trajectory from last year. Like, they took this last January, and MAP gives you a trajectory, right? And did they dip and then meet their last year's trajectory? I would say that's still inconsistent. But have they made gains, considerable gains of September? Definitely.
All right, such interesting times.
Yeah.
Definitely, yeah.
But you guys, I'm assuming you're reaching out to families of students or trying to help the kiddos that need it?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Thank you.
Related to that, and thank you for that question, Melissa, let me ask both Liz and Helen, are we talking about the in-person students for the MAPS scores? I don't know that you're yet talking about it in the Virtual Learning Academy.
Right. Yep, I'm just looking at the in-person instruction.
Yeah.
Okay, so I know that that testing has also occurred, and Chris, that might be something for Lynn Carey or you to look into to see where we are. The principals would want that information also, whatever the results are for the kids who are in the Virtual Learning Academy. But that's good, and Melissa, thank you for that excellent question. It's very important. I think I'd also like to know, it's kind of a, you know, a little past mid-year check, but with COVID, and all things considered, you've been able to keep the physical distance in each of the classes. You've been able, you've not had any problem with that, meeting the CDC requirements and such, right? I know that children, as you report, are doing a good job at wearing their masks, but you don't have any situation in the classroom where you feel like it's too crowded at all in either of your buildings? Is that correct?
I don't feel so. I feel like it takes a lot of reminders because kids are like magnets to each other, so you do have to remind them of distancing. It's not, it's probably the harder transition than the mask. The mask was pretty easy. We have minimal, if any, concern with masks, but the distancing, we do have to remind and remind and remind. But is there enough space? Definitely.
Yeah, I would concur with that, that there's definitely enough space. And the way the teachers have set up the classrooms, it makes it easier to be the routine of this is where, this is how we do things, which is very different than how most normal classrooms have been operated in the past. You know, that's trying to figure out how to play a game together, how to play a math game together. You know, teachers have gotten creative about, okay, here's the shield, here's the three feet. You just turn around, and you play on this side of the shield, and you play on that side, and everybody rolls their own dice, everybody has their own paper. But, you know, they're playing a game together, which is, you know, part of learning. And so it's, they've had to do a lot to really figure out all these different pieces to make it work so kids can continue. I think some of the issues that we've come up against is that, you know, some of the routines have become so normal now that that's just how they operate, right? And so they just know that when they line up to go wherever, they're standing on those little circles that are still on the floor, and there just doesn't have to be as many reminders. We're finding that we're having to do more reminders to families, you know, outside when they're picking up kids or dropping kids off about, hey, how about your mask? Oh, remember, stay in your car, you know? I think people are, you know, tired of having to do all this and would like to be able to come out and just be social and share their dog that's in the car and talk with people. But we keep having to remind that we're still in this. We got to keep vigilant. We don't want anybody getting sick at this point in the game because we've been so successful.
And related to that, how has attendance in general in both buildings, both of children and of teachers and other staff, how's that going?
I think its attendance is amazing, and, you know, the building is healthier than it's ever been. You know, we just don't have colds and, you know, any of that stuff going on because we're so vigilant about all of that. So attendance has been great, and the help of the building's been great.
Yeah, I would echo that. It's pretty impressive. Not as, like, very minimal, like, the average runny nose that generally every kid gets multiple times a year is just not happening. In remote attendance as well as in-person attendance has been great.
You know, we hope someday not to have the social distancing, but we are wondering if, you know, wearing masks during flu season might be something we should continue.
Yeah, we've seen a decrease in, you know, just overall colds and flu and stuff across the SU. So, you know, that's promising. I mean, we're not seeing the numbers of sicknesses and runny noses that we've seen in the past, you know. I discovered that speaking with principals during my weekly principal meetings that if anything else, the kids are healthier in the schools right now because of how cautious everyone's being. It's amazing how resilient kids are and what a wonderful job the teachers and the administration are doing to keep everyone safe and still provide an education. Something all boys should be very proud of their teachers and administrators for the job they're doing because they're on the front lines.
Well, absolutely, and the educators in Vermont are doing a particularly fine job, as are the citizens of Vermont. And the healthcare providers and all of that were extremely fortunate. But having said that, it's a big challenge. So to echo what Chris just said, thank you to each of you principals for your leadership and the good job that you and your whole team are doing. So thanks. Any other questions? Oh, yeah, Lynn, please.
I wanted to go back to the positives. Now, those are positives that were students before they were in the building? Or did they, were they in the building and found positive?
Yeah, you know, we just report the number and have to be careful about staff, students in the building, out of the building because we have to protect, you know, people's medical information.
We haven't seen anything spread inside the building.
No, no, we have not had any of that.
Lynn, yeah, all the cases that we've seen, Lynn, happened from outside of the school contact. In the small amount of cases we had, they were stuff that was done outside of the school day. And we've been fortunate enough that it's either happened over vacation or a long weekend or something. So it's never something that started at school, was contracted at school. It was always, you know, maybe if, you know, family had an outside visitor or something come in. So, yeah, but it's a good question. No, it's not, it hasn't been in school.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for the principals? Thank you, guys, so much. All right. So I think Flora, the next topic is, oh, Chris, yes, please.
I would like to wish Helen a happy birthday and let her go so she doesn't have to spend her birthday, not that she wouldn't want to with all of us, but I'm sure she has other things to do. So I'd like to offer that out there if the board is okay with that.
Thank you. My husband's cooking dinner, so you know.
We'll enjoy, and thank you and happy birthday.
Oh, thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thanks. So I think our next item of business is with Flora. Flora, did you want to, I believe that's correct, Chris? It's old business, and it has to do with signing of a new checking account perhaps. Flora, please.
Yes, so currently Helen has her student activity account already with People's Bank. So we would just like to move as well Westminster account to People's Bank. So the reason for this is that since the school had to merge and it's just now Union Elementary, the banks needed to update the information. And in order for the bank to do that, they need to close the account, open a new account with the new information. So since we have already the business with People Bank for Helen and as well Westminster has a credit card for the student activity with People's Bank, we just felt that it's just for the best interest to keep everything with People's Bank since regardless, they need to close the account they have with TD Bank. So the process is we bring it to you guys. You guys need to approve for Elizabeth to go and close the account and then be able to open the new account with People's Bank. Once you guys approve that, then Elizabeth, Hallheart, Harlow, and Jack Brier needs to sign all the papers and authorize them, so then she could present them at the bank. So we do have already the credit card in place because that was approved already and we did all the steps. So it will be just moving the funds to People's Bank.
Do you need any action tonight?
It's just if you guys agree for her to move her student activity accounts to People's Bank.
Yeah, we need a motion from the board to approve the removal of funds from one bank to the other.
And Lynn just moved, is that correct? So Lynn Morgan has just moved that the Westminster principal has the authority to move an account from TD Bank to People's Bank. And so that motion is on the floor? And we don't have to have a second.
Okay.
No, but that's fine, Melissa. It's always nice. It's an affirmation. So with that motion on the floor, your vote, please, Lynn Morgan?
Yes.
And Melissa?
Yes.
And I will vote in the affirmative as well, yes. So Flora, that motion is passed, and you will follow up with the appropriate paperwork with Jack Brier, the chair, and with Lynn Morgan, the clerk of this board, to get everything done with Liz Hardy, the principal. That's it, right?
And Paul Harlow as well.
Oh, the treasurer. Okay, thank you very much. That makes sense. Perfect. All right. Uh huh, absolutely. So Chris, is there any new business?
No, you know, I think just to give everyone either this board an update, we're wrapping up the audits. The audits are complete. You saw the draft, and they're going to be working on the, Flora's been working with the auditors, and we'll meet with them once everything's finalized. But moving forward, you know, Flora and I have been speaking about, we really want to try to get the audits done at the start of the school year next year rather than during a budget season. It's just, they're two large things, and they shouldn't be happening at the same time. So we're looking at that as well. So by doing that, what we're really hoping is that the budget will be done. We'll have the information we need to make the best decisions we can in most likely another difficult budget season. So we're looking on moving the audits up. And what'd we say, August? Is that what we...
We're thinking, you know, since the year finished in June, so we will have the month of July in the business office to close everything. And usually it takes the month of July, first two weeks of August as well. I just think it's fair that since now we're fully staffed, you know, that if employees will go on their vacations. So that's why we are asking to at least start the audit the second week of August so that way we could start getting paperwork together, and then they could just come in either the last week of August or first week of September. That way, by the middle of September, they should be done with the audits.
And that'll set it, yeah, and that will set us up for being more prepared for the budget and really get started on the budgets, I would say. Early October. So we're trying to adjust the timeline so we're not so straight out like we've been, I think, since I've been here. We're trying to spread it out a little more so everyone gets the good information. So that's, you know, on audits and what we're trying to do there. The other thing is just to let the public know as well, just to reaffirm that the central office is moving to Westminster Station Road. It's, the office is just past the Irving Gas Station on the right. It's two over from the post office. We're excited about that. We're lucky enough that we're moving early because one of the things is we're using some of the ESER money to get us moved because the current location on Cherry Hill, it is dilapidated. It's old. It's run down for any of you who've been there and seen that. But also because it really lacks the ventilation systems that it's needed, not just for schools, but for, you know, people who work with schools and in schools, we're able to use some ESER funds to get us in a much newer building. And buildings, there's a main building in a small cottage that we're calling it, and where the ventilation is better. We signed the lease, as most of you know, last week. I got the keys last Friday. The actual physical move will start on Wednesday. Over vacation, we have a, you know, we will be moving, but hopefully, it'll be seamless enough that anyone outside of the SU office really won't see a disruption to business. We'll still have our phones. We'll still be able to be contacted. It's a really nice space. We're looking forward to this COVID to be over, to, you know, show it to people and let people come in and visit and see. I think it'll be, it's going to be a nice face, a nice change to the SU. The larger building is newer. The smaller building, we've got new ventilation system put in. They put in new windows, carpets, heating. So I think in the long run, you know, we're looking at... So I think in, in the long run, you know, we're, we're looking at a healthier environment for anyone in the SU offices, and we're, we're looking forward to it.
Oh, that's, that's great. And Chris, could you give us the acronym? What is the ESSA funding that you're referring to?
That's, that's the, the federal and the state, the, the money that's come down from the feds, that's gone down to the local. It's tied to, you know, I forget the, the acronym for what it's, what it's for, but it's the, it's the grant monies that came from the feds to the state all of a sudden, portioned out to all the SUs in the state to help, you know, cover with, you know, costs that are tied to the pandemic and what we're dealing with. And so it's the federal funding that's come down through the governor, and then the governor reissued it a certain portion of that money to school districts.
And it's my understanding that you all, Dr. Carey and you, needed to apply for a grant, even though that those monies are available, it might not have happened had you not applied for the support. Do I have that correct? Or was that a different grant in addition?
No, it's, it's, it's the same. It's, it's, you're, you're correct. It's something that, you know, we don't automatically get. We have to apply for, we have to make sure that what we're using the money for, it qualifies and it falls in the grant for everything that we, that we use the grant money for. We have to write up and, you know, tell them, you know, just like anything else, the, you know, these are the prices we got. This is what we're using it for. How does it fit in the grant and everything? And, you know, like I said before, we're very lucky to have, one, a fully staffed business office that's really, as you can all tell through the past, you know, this year, that we've made leaps and bounds. But also, you know, Dr. Carey spends a lot of time working on these grants. And, you know, the, the time and effort that she's put into getting these grants and putting it all together, since, you know, she's added millions and millions of dollars to additional grant monies because of the work that she's doing. And when I say millions, I'm saying, you know, eight million, 10 million plus that we didn't have before. So she's really organized that. And she spends many hours each day working on grants. So we have this money, and we're, we're getting approved, we're, we're spending it, and we're using it as the grant is required us to do. So there's a lot, there's a lot of work there. And without Dr. Carey's, you know, help and the business office and stuff, there's no way, you know, we'd be able to keep these grants flowing because it is a lot of work, and this timeline's tied to it, you know. So, yeah, it's not something that's automatic.
Thank you for all of that. And this, I would say again, for the public, that it's been an issue, that the safety and the overall conditions of the current SU office have been a concern for a long while. And so it's wonderful that this new property became available, that it was possible to make the move. And then in addition, the fact that federal monies were able to be made available to help with that is simply, you know, it's, it's, it's wonderful. I mean, the move was necessary, but the fact that these additional monies were made available and were able to be used for that is, is outstanding.
Yeah, because, because we're able, we're able to move, and the taxpayers don't have to flip the bill for it. I mean, and that's the most important thing. I think it was just the right time to do that. We just really had to be real careful with the ESSA monies that we were able to, to use it for that. And we got approval that, yes, if we wrote it up correctly, we, we could do that. So we lost Cheryl. Flora?
Yeah, so the ESSA grant is the Elementary Secondary School Emergency Relief Program that is granted to the school district for COVID reasons. So that's why we took advantage of it. But, you know, it's maybe a one-year grant that we just got. And I know that Chris mentioned audits, and I'm still waiting for the final draft for the Union Elementarys. We did get the SU and the other two districts. So hopefully, by tomorrow, we get the one for the Union Elementarys, so we can review them on the next meeting. So once I get the final draft from them, I will just forward that to you guys and share it.
Yeah, we're, we're moving right along. And, you know, I've been, I've been very happy with, with the results that we're getting and the workflow that's going on, with everything going on between moving and budget season and town meeting day and COVID pandemic. I'm, I'm very proud of, you know, everyone that works within the SU. And, and so we're just going to continue to plug forward, but we're really looking forward to getting into the new spaces. Like I said, if anything else, it's a much healthier space to be in for anyone who works at the SU or comes into the SU. So that's all I have for discussion under new business.
I appreciate all of that. And I would just like to ask Nicole, if you could make sure that the minutes reflect this goal to have the audit process completed by September with our being able to start the budgeting process, the goal to start it by October of next year. That's great. I'd like to see that documented. Thank you. Are there any appointments or resignations, Chris?
No, not, not, not tonight.
Okay, I think we can go to Director's comments. Lynn, anything you want to add right now?
Um, I'm just so excited that this is all falling together, that we can make this move to the new building. And just kudos to everybody that's made it possible. That's great news.
Absolutely. Thank you. And Melissa?
I guess what I was thinking of tonight is I'm just super grateful that Westminster, just that's where my student goes, they figured out a way to incorporate some basketball with the skills and drills. And even though they're not playing games, like, I know for my child, like, childhood is still important, you know? And it's, it's really lit in him up in a whole, like, just to have this after-school club, like, it all means so much more to the kids right now. So when you guys do the extra mile to, like, give something like that to kids, like, my son's jumping up and down, you know, and he hasn't had a lot of excitement. So thank you.
No, that's wonderful.
I hope snow days helped.
Um, this, this is Cheryl again. I think you cannot see me because I got kicked off the computer, but I am here. And I would just say to everybody, thank you. Well, no, let me, here it comes back again. At any rate, thank you all for your goodwill this evening.
Jack would say, just leave the meeting.
Anyone want to make a motion to adjourn? Oh, she's coming back.
Oh, there she is.
All right. Did you guys lose me again, or did I lose you? At any rate, thanks, everybody. I think we can, yes, entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Let's do so.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Have a good rest of your night.